Go ahead and get started. First item on the work session for this afternoon is Quail Creek Golf Grounds manager, Tom Johnson. Tom, welcome aboard. Bobby, come on, come on, come aboard.
Councilman?
Yeah.
City Council, thank you for letting us speak tonight. And of course, some of you have met Tom Johnson, our new golf course superintendent. He's just been on the job now about, about a month now. So he's made a big improvement at the golf course, but we're still in trouble with our greens. So we're here tonight to talk to you about some things and plans and with your guidance to help us put, move forward into making them better. The information I put in front of you is concerning revenues. And the sheet is for our golf shop ledger for carts, green fees, range balls. And then the second one is on there is for our snack bar, which is our revenue which streams through the golf shop. What I presented to you on the first page is a recap for three-month period of June, July, and August. And each sheet is then broken down by the month as to what our basic revenues are for each month. Concerning the greens that we'll kind of jump a little bit back to, if we were to, the revenue that we're producing now is off due to the greens being in poor shape. There's not as many people playing. We haven't lost play to other golf courses. We still have a lot of people coming out to play. We've had several golf tournaments in the last few weeks, and they've been quite successful. Prodigy Pantry raised $58,000 for Prodigy Pantry in Spanish Fort. The Jackson Clark Foundation raised around $20,000, $21,000 for the Jackson Clark Legacy Fund. Kiwanis Club did very well, and some others. So the revenue that's produced from the golf course is still significant. However, we're facing this time with the greens to ask for your permission to do some work on them. Tom is an expert in agronomy. He's going to tell you more about the square footage on the greens, some of his goals and plans and what we need to do. But they do need to be addressed. We do need your help in possibly either doing temporary greens or shutting down. But I wanted you to have the revenue in front of you. Based on last year, there are two greens that we redid, number six and number 11, were just two greens, and they're much better, and Tom will tell you about them. They're in great shape. They cost us about $1.59 per square foot. And it was right around $21,000 that we asked for, for just those two greens. Now, for more greens, the price probably would come down a little bit. But as you know, that was last year, and with inflation, we'll have to talk about that. I'm going to turn things over and introduce you to Tom, and he can tell you some of the things he's been doing. And any questions you want to ask, please do so.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, may I approach the bench?
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you, good, bro. Give you a minute to look at that. I met with Mayor Sullivan on my second day of the job, April 12th, and told her the greens were in real, real trouble. We have 21 greens on the course, including 18 hole greens and two, three practice greens. Bobby's come up with figures to renovate all 21, and I feel like, and Bobby feels like, we together feel like we have saved at least 12 of those 21. So the sheet you have in front of you are the nine greens that are in real trouble, two of which may come back around, number three and number 15. But there are nine greens, including the practice green and eight on the course, that I do not feel we can rehabilitate without having to renovate. Questions for me?
I've got a few. First question, preliminarily, I had heard a number of like 250,000, so this is substantially lower. I'm just wondering if there's any, where the other number had come from?
Think of your opportunity cost there, though.
Oh, if you factor in this plus that, okay. I see. And that number may have even been light.
Can I answer that?
Yes, sir.
The first number came before we got together with Tom and one of the other companies that can do this type of work. I put in at the dollar and 59, I inflated that.
Okay.
Everything going up, and I did it for 21 greens. So that was doing, shutting down and doing everything. That's where that money came from.
Okay.
Now, Tom had asked, as he said, for time to do some work, as he says, throw the kitchen sink out and fertilizers, nitrogen, lime, and some other products. So now he's been able to do his thing and save some.
Okay.
We've saved you about $170,000.
Okay. Well, I mean, I played out there a week or so ago, and there's no doubt they need, need an overhaul. I would love to do this without shutting down the golf course entirely. I mean, is this, you still got nine holes. I know it'd be kind of hit or miss. You'd play four through eight, then jump on 11. I mean, might not be the most ideal setup, but do you think that leaving the course open and letting people play those nine holes that are in decent shape is better than just shutting it down?
Well, one thing we did today on number 16, 16 is not in good shape, so we went ahead and cut a temporary out in front. We can play temporary greens like we did for six and 11, but of course, that was just for two holes. But for nine holes, the only hole that we think will have an issue would be number two, the short par three, the second hole. That fairway is at slopes and has a lot of red clay dirt in it. I don't know that we can play a temporary there. We may just have to skip the hole. But we have talked about it, and we are prepared to do temporaries. I think Tom has done an excellent job with fertilizer treatment that we did over the last few weeks. And now we got some heavy rain the other day that helped. We've raised the height of the fairways. Time to tell you more about that, trying to get the thatch to grow better and the ball to sit up better. So the turf in the fairways is much healthier than it has been in the past. And therefore, temporaries can be an avenue that we'll explore to keep things open, keep some revenue coming in.
Yeah, I would not want to shut it down entirely. I think you'd lose a little bit of traction there. People won't as frequently want to go eat, and then, and they might get used to playing somewhere else. So whether you, whether you just play the nine holes that don't need work, or whether you cut in temporaries and play 17 out of 18, I think that would, that would be more favorable to me, at least. Council members, y'all have any, any thoughts or questions? I know Jack talked to you.
Yeah, I've got several. Tom, first question, just kind of from my own edification of the practice green, which one of these is in need of rebuild of the three?
If you're, if you're facing the clubhouse, the one to the left, the primary practice green.
Number one tee box?
Yeah.
And the good thing about that is we still have the other two at 10, and also.
I'll be using the one at number 10 to cut sod off to replace bad spots on those 12 holes that we are keeping. But we will keep it open to some extent as a practice green. It's a tiny little green.
Will you try to turn the practice green, if we were to stay open, would you, would you turn the practice green there between the clubhouse and the driver lanes into a putting green so people can practice their putting?
It really doesn't have tiff door, if it doesn't have greens grade grass on it, but we can cut it down to allow putting, if possible, if, if you want to.
Just something is, is to give them some confidence going into the game, is let them bang a, you know, six or 10 putts out, something.
Sure.
I would think. And then to Jimmy's point about, you know, staying open up, I do echo that sentiment. And there's, there's really only seven greens that are, that are listed on here, or eight, I'm sorry, eight. So we would have 10 holes. I see it as a couple options. You can put the temporary greens, but you may not be able to get as much work done as you want if everybody's trying to play 18 holes. Or you could turn it into a nine hole or a 10 hole course. You could shut down three entirely. I mean, you could skip it, you know? I think, I think we have enough pars threes, fours, and fives to make a par 34, 30, I mean, I'm sorry, a 34, 35, 36, or 37, which is very typical, I mean, for nine holes. You could flip tee boxes or, I still think we have options in it. And not only am I worried about just losing revenue and people going off the reservation and maybe not coming back, but I'm really worried about what you do with the employees. You say you can put them to work, but you're not going to ask the cart girl to go out there with a chainsaw and start trimming trees, or driving a mower, or, you know, plugging fair, or fairways. I just, and they lose not only their, their revenue, I just don't know what you do with people that aren't already involved in course maintenance. It seems to be too much liability to put them in that situation, even, I mean, in anything, construction or anything that they might be doing.
You make a good point. I will say Bobby has a staff member, her first name is Susan, I don't know her last name, who can outwork any man on my crew.
I'm not saying they can't do the work. I'm saying that are they, you put somebody out there without training, and you have an accident, and then we got a big liability situation on our hands. And do you, in eight weeks, do you have time to formally train somebody to operate a mower or any kind of piece of machinery, any machinery or, you know, I don't know what else there is to do, right?
I will say, yeah, and I do think there's some opportunity, obviously not putting on equipment, but there are, the benches need to be, need to be painted, and the little boxes where you put the sand need to be painted. I mean, there's some stuff like that, but I certainly think, we talked about some cleaning, some stuff in the clubhouse that needs to be done, just some attention to detail, some of the things that I think you could, you know, do a punch list. I mean, it may not keep them busy all the time, but I do think with the part-time staff and some of the full-time, you would have plenty of opportunity for some of them to do some stuff.
Well, we're going to have enough to do play, I would think, even whatever we do, we have enough to do play to allow some of that downtime, too.
Yeah, I just, I think we need to find a way to at least keep half the course open and play through, even if it's just jumping from hole to hole. But the other question I had is, is summer a good time to come in and do the work and do the greens, just jump on it right away? Or do you need to wait till fall? What's the best time of year to?
The optimal time is the longest day of the year when photosynthesis is at its best.
Okay, so right now, we want to jump in?
I've spoken with the company that did the greens renovation last year. They have a window, the second week of June, that they could begin. They're in Selma right now. They're, I won't go into the details, but they have a window there where they could jump on it if they get the bid. And it looks like it's around $80,000. That's last year's prices. We're probably going to have to bid this out, which is going to take a little bit longer and may push it past June. But we want it done in June, July, and August for sure.
Okay.
So the period of grow in is shorter.
Okay, so.
Do we need to take action to put it out for bid, Lisa?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, I think definitely want to move on that kind of quickly. I think anyone who's been out there recently knows we got to get, get them back into working order. And I know you've done a good job, Bobby, informing people in advance of that, but the mess I kept hearing was, man, these, I know he said it three times, but these really are in bad shape, is what people would say when they get out to the, to the greens, so.
Well, it's better that you know before you go out there.
Yeah, and, and the course, other than that, I mean, the course looks good, and, and people I know love playing out there and love supporting the city.
Addressing, as Tom has done a fabulous job over his four-week period getting a lot of grass to grow back in on some of these, we still need to probably do as many temporaries as we can starting out. And he still is babysitting several greens that he says he can save, but if we can keep traffic off of them, we still need to open up temporaries till he can get them healthy, keep the foot traffic off of them and the compaction, and let him do the aerification and process. Then, as those heal up, we would open them. Of course, those that need to be redone are there on the sheet.
And do?
I don't have a problem keeping the golf course open, keeping everybody employed. I think that's important, too, to keep the revenue stream coming in. Golf is in a big boom right now. You're in good shape for the next three, four, or five years. I think golf's not going anywhere. When you produce a new product for them to play on, number six and number 11 are just really, really good, as you saw when you were out there. Eight to 12 weeks, this will be behind us.
Well, that's good to hear. And do we know whether it was over chemicals or cutting, or what led to the, the issue to begin with?
I allowed the crew to cut the greens a little lower and keep the polvo. The entire golf course was so rapid in polvo, just so clumpy and so bad. The first mowed them down, everybody raved about them because they were smooth and rolling very good. However, that type of process really told the Bermuda coming back in.
Gotcha.
One of the employees tried to do some bird cutting, which was too premature in the cold weather and that damper. It wasn't, as far as I know, anything chemical, just a bad mowing process. I had a part to doing that, I'll admit that, but Bermuda's usually pretty healthy coming back. We have had a lot of cool nights, the weather's been very pleasant outside, as you know. It's nice to sit on your courts and have cool air, but it's not helping the Bermuda. We need those 150-degree average days still. And I think with this man's health right here, I think we're going to see a bright future in the next three to four months.
Okay, and so.
Yes, that was just our poor performance on that. I'm not superintendent.
No, but something.
Just trying to give a good product.
I'm just making sure something we can avoid in the future, if we spend the money to get the greens up to where they need to be, that it's not something we would have to worry about necessarily happening again shortly thereafter.
We did, it was 14, 15 years ago, Harold Childers was superintendent, and we did shut down and redid all of them. And, but that particular implement that's in the soil, it's, Tom can tell you more about it, we're going over the sand base this time and not an organic mix. He feels pretty good about that. He answered that better than I can.
Well, council members, any, any thoughts or comments? Is everybody on board with moving forward and getting bids and?
You touched on something, just another curiosity. When they rebuild the greens, what will that consist of? Will there be some new type of dressing put in there before the soil, before the frigs are planted or?
Yes, two to three inches of sand. We have enough organic mix there that when we till it in, it's going to be about 80% sand, 20% organic mix, which will hold nutrients but still percolate water well. That's what's recommended by each of the companies that I've spoken with as well.
And I just, for the record, Councilman Conyers and Councilman, he does have two degrees from Auburn and one from Mississippi State.
Then we can't go wrong.
As Amherst?
Cumberland School of Law, yes, sir, year 2000.
Your law year two?
Yes.
We can do all kinds of things.
He said we.
You know, for a long time, I would say prayers and not sleep at night.
Prayer's worth it, Bob.
It's amazing.
You know, my lack is a medical degree from South Alabama.
If I get any input, I would like to say, let's leave 17 holes open and close number two.
I'm fine with that. If you can do that, I'm fine cutting half of them.
I'd rather do that and have people driving all over the course.
Okay.
The places like Talladega, as it is with golf carts, they did not use the cart paths.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and I think that's just something that we just have to try to educate. It's prevalent every single golf course. Everybody wants to take the shortest path between where they're at and wherever their ball is. And in my case in particular, that might involve a cross-country drive sometimes, so, you know, we just have to tell them, if you want, you know, nice, if you want it to be nice, you have to, you have to respect your cart paths.
I appreciate your consideration.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you all for addressing this.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate you all. All right, next item up is electric department project updates. Conrad?
How you all doing this evening?
Doing well.
We've got two updates. Ian Morrison will be giving us update on our 46 projects, and Jeff Hartline will be giving us all of our substation update, upgrades.
Okay. How's it going today?
Hey, good. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ian Morrison. I'm overseeing the distribution and transmission upgrades being done by East Bay. Just a quick update, as of now, we have five transmission poles completed. This will allow us to energize the new nickel sub, once some more testing has been done on that one. They have set 13 distribution poles with one new circuit energized. The second circuit will be pulled in midweek on these poles. By the end of the week, this section will be, for the most part, completed. The crews then will be headed west to the new nickel sub towards School Street. Good?
Good.
They started on March 21st, and we're still waiting on a couple of things, but they had a slow start due to waiting on material. Yeah, that's what it is. We're, they're jumping around, hopscotching a little bit because some poles didn't come in, had to be done on this little strip, and that's what's kind of holding them up. But off to a slow start, but they're, they're doing good.
Do they have an anticipated completion date?
Hopefully less than a year, I guess. Nah, they're, they're doing good, though, so hopefully they'll make it in that time.
Ian, so they can energize the nickel substation, and then once Morphy comes along, they can energize that, whatever.
Yeah, Morphy's going to be kind of, it's kind of the back burner a little bit right now. They're trying to finish the west side of town first. They'll be taking Church Street out first before they start on Morphy side.
They will take Church Street out before they start on Morphy.
Yes, man. Yeah, the Morphy side's a lot easier than the, the west side of town, so.
So we're going to get Nichols energized, then take down Church, and then get Morphy energized and?
That's right, yep. So, yeah, we're still.
When will that old Nichols come down?
Yes, sir.
When will that be approximately?
It's hard to say. We're still waiting on some material to get the new Nichols.
Can you give me within six months?
Should be, hopefully, yeah.
I mean, I was just saying, can you estimate it within six months? So within the next six months?
Uh, yeah, I would say so. I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, probably three months, maybe, if they can get all the material in pretty soon. We're still waiting on wire to leave the new nickel sub, and it's been on order for a pretty good while.
That's a pretty critical piece of property there.
Exactly.
It's being looked at for some other uses.
Gotcha.
That's why it's going to be nice to know when that might take place.
Whenever the wire comes in, we'll probably let you know a better time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ian.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, sir. How's it going today?
Hi, gentlemen. Jeff Hartline, Substation Meter Tech for the City of Farrelly Electric Department. As you know, that we rebuilt two substations and we built two new substations. Current time, the Twin Beach Substation, the rebuilds there are done. You probably remember, we installed two 50 KVA transformers, T1 and T2, new high-side protection for those two transformers, all-new LRB switches. And T3 high-side protection was converted over from analog to digital, and also in that tub, we have all-new CTs installed. So that job is complete. At the current time, the new Nickel Street Substation, the construction is done on that site. At this time, we're waiting for East Bay to finish their work so we can put a load on those transformers, so we can have Liberty come in and do follow, rest of the testing on the tubs and the breakers to go ahead and to 100% put that station in service. And we also have the, if you guys are talking about the old nickel site, when it could be torn down, that's pretty well on schedule with Ian, when we get all this done at that site, the fiber optic lines for the city go into that substation. And we do have the new fiber conduit ran to the new Nickel Street Substation. So that's all ready to go. Valana Substation, the rebuild's all done. New 25 KV transformer was installed, two new regulators, rebuilt all the high-side, low-side construction on that. New fence was installed, and all-new digital Switzer controllers for that substation. It's all done. And currently, at the Morphy site's under construction. Right now, 95% of the concrete pads are installed. The control house is installed, the new fence is installed, and we did have a problem where we had some behind on getting all the new steel, steel structure, and at this time, all the steel structure is on-site and ready to be installed. We're going to wait another, on the 17th of this month, we will be transferring the new transformer from the Twin Beach Substation to the Morphy site. And once that's done, we can go ahead and start finishing the steel structure, because we can't put it up right now because the crane needs to get in there. And at that time, we would also be moving our, both these regulators from our warehouse to that substation.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Jeff?
I have one. The SCADA system for that on Morphy, it would be incorporated as we go along, or is that something that we will come back?
Oh, yes. We'll, we'll have the SCADA, when that, when that station is up and ready for operation, the SCADA system will be operational at that time.
Very good, very good.
Absolutely. We're on, on track with the SCADA.
And how's that going around town? How's that, how's that process going?
The SCADA itself, the software, BT SCADA, is done. The programming on that is done. We just have to get some of our communication at our substations up to date, which we're currently waiting for vendors to ship us our products that we need. As soon as we get that, we'll have that done.
Okay. Very good.
Yep.
When you move that transformer from Twin Beach out to Morphy, will that pretty much render the Twin Beach Substation shut down, or will it still be?
No, sir. We're just using the pole yard, the pole yard at Twin Beach Substation where we keep our power poles. That's a staging area for all of our equipment.
Okay.
For, for all of our, it's in storage there on-site.
Okay. All right. Good deal.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, next item up is discussion of right-of-way ordinance and summary of the proposed changes. Eric?
The other, I've got hard copies for everybody as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. This is, we had discussed this a while back, kind of talked about it. One of the things in doing this was, we had sent this to Greg Fender, who is the, one of the city's consultants that works a lot on our telecom, and had asked him for his comments. He got back to me, I think it was beginning of last week, and so we went through, and I'd like to say, you know, let you guys know, I don't know if you know John Thomas. John is our right-of-way and construction inspector, and he is, he did the absolute lion's share of this work, and he's the guy out in the field that is seeing all of the things and dealing with contractors, dealing with the citizens. And so, you know, he, his opinion and his view is a huge part of this, in addition to Richard and George and some of the others. So one of the things we did was, we incorporated some of the comments that Greg gave us, and I'm just going to track through to let you know, this, these, these sections will be replacing ordinance 1254, which was adopted in June of 2005 and has not been revised since. So we're working on a 17, I guess, 17-year-old ordinance. Anything you see, and I gave you color copies, anything you see in yellow on those copies were corrections at the suggestion of Greg, and so you'll see those as we go. And at the beginning of, beginning of the packet I gave you, there's a summary guide. So we'll go through this again. I know Councilman Burrell was, was not here when we talked about it before. I don't remember if Councilman Martin was. So we'll just briefly go through these things. But we went through and added, we, we're missing a lot of definitions, and that's something that comes up when someone asks a question, we'll define what you're talking about. So added a bunch of definitions, the administration, we updated the administration portion because administering these right-of-ways have changed a lot over the last 17 years. The permitting, we defined what the permitting requirements are for major, minor, type A and type B projects. And we put some specific language in there. Let me keep rolling here. We put some specific language in there for restoration, because that is something that has been, been a big deal as these. has been, been a big deal as these contractors are working their way through the subdivisions, how they need to restore, how soon they need to restore, making sure they put zoysia instead of whatever other kind of grass whomever had. And so we put in talking about restoration and, and trying to make sure that, and putting timeframes on it. So one of the things we, in the old ordinance, did not have specific timeframes by which they had to have this work done. And those are the kind of calls that, that John gets. I'm sure, I think actually some of you have probably gotten those calls, that the work is hanging out there and taking forever. So we put some timeframes on it where they have to get in and get it fixed. Let's see. Keep rolling, that's, okay, enforcement. We talked, there was not a lot in the last ordinance about the enforcement. It gave some just very basic information. But we talk in here about denial. We talk mandatory denial, permissive denial. When these things come up, one of the comments you see there on page thirteen, the yellow section that was struck through, that was at Greg's suggestion because he felt that we had that bullet point covered in the other sections. So talking about the degree of disruption to the surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. That's something when these contractors go in to large subdivisions and they start going through all these, these streets and, you know, digging the bore pits, digging for the pedestals, doing all this, you know, we're gonna take into account what the disruption is that results from those things. We talked about work done without a permit, which, you know, if there's an emergency situation, you know, we can do that. They, they're allowed to begin work on an emergency situation, but they have to come in and get a permit for that so that we can track that work. We updated the section on enforcement, talking about what our abilities are, what, what we can do as far as enforcement, to cover some things that had not come up before. We talked about, well, we went through and, and covered indemnification and liability. So this puts the, the full responsibility of the work that is done on the contractor, as it should be. They're the ones in there doing the work. Talks about injuries and property loss or property, loss of service or damage to properties. It does give a section on, on exceptions to that so that we have some, some options to look at things on a case-by-case basis if necessary, which those things do come up. And it does codify what the, what the penalties are as far as dollar amounts from fifty to five hundred dollars and imprisonment, which is not exceeding six months or at the discretion of our municipal judge. General provisions, which is a lot of the legal side that we need to cover in this, these are, these are just general items you have to have in these types of ordinances. And the other thing I do wanna make sure, you know, everybody understands, these are only in city right-of-ways. This ordinance does not govern, you know, our, our permitting extends beyond the city limits, but not with this ordinance. We cannot govern or permit right-of-ways that are not the city's right-of-ways. So you're gonna see a lot of intermingling between county roads and city roads or points where county roads and city roads may intersect or connect. That's something we do get a lot of calls about, I believe, John, that trying to figure out who's got what. So we ran into this, we had the same situation, I know during the Sally cleanup, trying to figure out whose, whose road was what and, and handle those things. But these provisions will only cover the, our ordinance only covers within the city limits and city maintained roads. On the schedule of fees, the, we really updated the schedule of fees because, like I said, our, our last ordinance was seventeen years old and it was significantly less on almost every single fee that was charged compared to neighboring jurisdictions. And we looked at jurisdictions all over the place, but we specifically looked at what some of our neighboring Mobile and Baldwin County jurisdictions were doing, and we were significantly lower than them. We had one fee for the longitudinal and transverse excavation. Greg had felt that that was a little high based on some of the things that he has done and consulting work he's done. So we revised that down per his suggestion to what he felt should be a fair price for that work. And the other thing in the yellow you'll see on that is those fees, those permitting fees are in addition to the franchise fee that the, each of the utility providers have Going down onto the second page, we're gonna get into a couple of things. Going down to the second page of the schedule, one of the things you're gonna see, a couple of things you're gonna see that are new are talking about balconies and canopies. And, you know, it talks about twenty-five dollars per square foot with a minimum of two hundred and fifty. Those are things that are over our right-of-way, balconies and canopies. Now, that is also intended to be a one-time fee at the time of permitting and at the time of construction. That is not an annual fee. Those are not things that we intended to do. But as it stands right now, if we have a building or a developer that wants to, or has or wants to put a balcony over our entire right-of-way, they are not being charged anything for that. And a lot of those things impact things we're trying to do. You know, trees and events and maintenance and all kinds of things. So that is one of the things, and that is consistent with some of the other communities we saw. So we did add that section. The other thing you're gonna see on there, which has been a hot topic and I get a lot of calls about it, are the containers on the public parking, public right-of-way. We have, and we're gonna get to that section, I highlighted that yellow, and we're gonna go through that kind of a little more detail. But overall, we, the number we came up with was no charge for seven or fewer total days. Beyond that, twenty-five dollars a day. And understand that that is with the approval to do it. That is not automatic that they get to do it. We get to evaluate the situation, look at the location, judge what kind of disruption that may or may not have, and we have the right to tell them, no, you cannot put it there. There are gonna be times and some, especially in the downtown area, those are tight building areas and there are not empty lots to put these things in. So we're gonna evaluate that on a case-by-case basis as these projects come in and where they're located. And if you look, that section right below it, section eleven nineteen one eleven is obstruction fees, and that's what it talks about. You know, we're also talking about sidewalks. When we have someone who has to tear up a sidewalk to get to the utility they're trying to do or pull out a couple of sidewalk panels to dig a bore pit or other things, there are, currently, there are no fees for them to do that. And previously, there was not necessarily a timeframe by which they had to have it repaired. We now have a timeframe that they have to restore it. And the obstruction is charged now at a rate of five dollars per calendar day for each twenty feet, linear feet of length of what they're disrupting. Fees will not be charged for the obstruction if it is less than eight hours. If somebody's getting in and they're getting their work done and getting back out of there, we're not, we're not gonna charge them a fee for one day of work. They're still subject to the provisions of, of restoring the site and getting it back operational again. But one-day projects, which we have a lot of, depending on what they are, we, the decision was not to do that. Dumpsters, containers, or large unmovable objects will not allow to be parked in the right-of-way without the approval of the building official or designee. Fees will apply as noted in the schedule. One of the things that we also put were trailers for construction activities. If they're movable and they, and they can attach to a vehicle and be taken out, they're not gonna pay a fee if they take them in and out on a daily basis. And that's something, the only time, dump trailers occasionally, they may wanna leave them for a few days. Work trailers that have equipment, those guys are gonna wanna take, they're gonna take those back with them every day.
Let's stop you for a moment.
Yes, sir.
Because you're going through a lot and I'm gonna forget all these questions at the end.
Sure.
You've got a utility trailer with maybe construction materials on it, they park in the right-of-way, but the right-of-way's the sidewalk. I'll just be honest, one of my pet peeves is, you know, I see trailers, especially landscapers, not to pick on them, but I see, I see a lot of construction workers with trailers parked on our sidewalks all over town, every single day.
Okay.
And as a pedestrian, you know, it's a safety issue.
Oh, it is.
You have to walk into the street. You don't wanna walk in somebody's yard necessarily, you have to walk into the street to go around it. And we're doing nothing about it. And it's getting to be pretty problematic.
There's a couple...
In my opinion.
Yeah, the, I just saw yesterday on Booth where they were doing some wire, I think, on Booth Road. But there's nowhere else, just to kind of, kind of play on this, there's nowhere else to park on Booth. So what, so in, in certain situations, I would say that's where you have to balance it.
We do, we have to evaluate it. One of the things, it's not gonna be covered under this ordinance, but driving down scenic ninety-eight, you see it all the time with the construction projects on scenic ninety-eight because there is no shoulder, you've got two lanes going back and forth. The only place, and a lot of those sites, you may not be able to get into with equipment. So you see that a lot on ninety-eight, and that is a concern with the county as well. Their primary, and they've called me about it, their primary concern is damage to the sidewalks. And that's a big concern for us. You know, when they're rolling heavy trailers over those things and tearing up sidewalk panels, that's a problem. But that's part of why we wanna have the ability to evaluate things on a case-by-case basis. Because if the only other option is to, because they're allowed to park them in the right-of-way, well, if the only option is, you know, something that's gonna get in the middle of traffic and if it's gonna be removed at the end of the day, I think it's a better option to let them scooch up onto the sidewalk and let's keep the traffic clear for the vehicles.
Don't have penalties for broken sidewalks, though?
Well...
Damage to our public right-of-ways is what I, I don't have a problem with it if they're not doing damage. Because sometimes, as you said, there is no, there's really no other solution. First of all, I think a lot of people don't wanna be inconvenienced because a lot of times, they could park in somebody's driveway and they don't wanna have to move, you know, four cars out of the way to let the contractor park in their driveway. You know, that's, that's just laziness. So just call that what that is. But there are times when there, there literally is no, nowhere to park. So I understand it, but at the same time, if they tear up our sidewalks, our, you know, our plants, our sod, our flowers, or whatever else.
Just gonna take care of it.
Yes, sir. Well...
We need provisions, at least in here, to address it.
Okay. Well, and also, do we have, is there something I'm not thinking about where we can address the sidewalks in here or is that part of the restoration inspection?
Yes, yes.
That...
If they, if they damage it during construction, that's part of the restoration. You know, the final walk you walk through and when you walk the final walk, you'll be able to tell if something during construction was damaged, then they will repair it. And, and that's, that's written into the permit. When they go to pull their permit, that's what they, they have that in.
If they have twenty contractors come and go and they all use it, though, that contractor's gonna say, I don't know who tore that up. I mean, you're gonna hold the contractor?
Well, the issue...
General contractor responsible?
Well, from our standpoint, we have a contractor that has a permit. They are, they are principally responsible for what goes on.
The alternative is ultimately to put them in the road and leave them off the sidewalks, but then you'd have to have, we'd have traffic control all over the city. We would have, you know, flaggers and one lane all over the place. So that would be the alternative, which is an option. If, if there's a, like on scenic ninety-eight where that, that's a highly traveled sidewalk, perhaps that's a good place for it. It's also a busy road, so you gotta, you know, take one or the other.
Right.
And decide you want, you know, pedestrian safety.
Right.
Or, or do you wanna back the road up a little bit? We can look at that either way, kind of see what, you know, which one, what works best for that location.
One of the things you mentioned, and John and I have talked about it, is fruit and nut area. And landscapers are, you know, that's something we see a lot of. They've got the landscape, but they can't pull up on because we've got a curb there that they can't go up on. So now we've got landscape trailers parked in, basically turning a two-lane road into a one-lane road. Right? Sound good? Okay.
Let me ask a question just a little bit about going back up to the, the parking, the, so the containers blocking parking spots?
Yes.
Okay, so that was twenty-five dollars a day after seven days?
After seven days.
Is that per parking spot they're taking up? So they have a container blocking five, that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day?
Well, typically, we tell them they're allowed to park a container in a space. Now, one of the things that's tough to manage, typically you'll have, for the most part, you'll have one container per, a trash container per construction site. The bigger issue, but that I don't know that we can do anything about, is the contractor parking around there because everybody's got a work truck. They all have tools on their work truck and, you know, they don't wanna have to lug them two blocks away if they can avoid it. So that's, that's a probably a, a harder thing to police and happens on, especially downtown. That happens on every single job site.
I know that.
Yes.
I know that. I don't make any promises.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the question. It, it, the question, if, if, I think Jay is asking, can we implement that to deter? We have to, my thing is, you have to have a deterrent, right? I mean, of some sort for people to kind of get the idea. And, and the question, I think, what Jay is asking, if not, I'm following up, is that good enough, is that a good enough deterrent for these guys to get the picture?
It, yeah, the parking, vehicular parking, I have no idea how you address that. I mean, that's a, that's a traffic issue that's not gonna be covered under this. Parking of containers there, if you wanna get the point across, charging them a fee per day, they'll take notice very quickly. And I think you, you probably may hear about that if this gets adopted and in place. You're gonna have some folks that are not gonna like that. But, you know, it, it is what it is.
I have another, go ahead.
But, but we've, I mean, we've done studies on how, how much, what the value of those parking spots are downtown. I mean, and so it's not just an arbitrary number that we're charging you a fee because we wanna be mean or punitive in some way. I mean, it's, it's lost value to the city of Farrelth through taxes, through whatever it is.
It's a big number, too.
For them to take it up for whatever period of time, whether it's one day or twenty days.
It used to be forty-eight thousand, but now, right, that was years ago.
And so, you know, it's, it's a...
Seventy per year or annually?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand.
That's what it's...
Seventy thousand now.
Seventy thousand, forty-five.
For each.
That's not even including opportunities, while it's like not having.
Yeah, and so I, I mean, I, you know, they're...
I wouldn't bring that word up. No meters out there listening, no meters.
You might get complaints, but I mean, it's, it's a real number. I mean, it's, it's, it's real to everybody involved. And so I, you know...
And I think twenty, but based on those numbers, twenty-five dollars a day is a bargain.
It is a bargain, but, but what we're saying is, can you, if they're doing multiple, since that is a real number, can we up that cost for each parking spot if they choose to take up those?
Oh, the charge will be per parking spot.
Okay, yeah, that's...
It's her spot.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not twenty-five for however many they need.
Okay, all right.
And we pretty much...
That still seems like a deal.
That's still low, but, yeah, it's a start.
Well, you still gotta have their permission to do it, too.
I know. I don't like...
And they still, yeah, and Jimmy just made a good point, they still have to get permission before they can put them down. It's not like, just because we have it in there that we allow everybody whenever. Because I just feel like I remember seeing maybe on section at one point, one of those big construction dumpsters turned, turned parallel or perpendicular to the spots, and it was going across four of them.
Well, and, and I will say, one specific instance, that that is an issue on the angled parking. We had a re-roof on a building just past or just uptown from the Broken Egg Building. Well, that's angled parking. Trying to fit a track, a tray, you know, a dumpster in there at an angle was not easy. So they came in and dropped it that morning early. And it was, it was like three spots. And I went and told them, you've got today to get this done and get it out. Now, also, that also will encourage, hopefully, axled trailers. If you look at the project at the corner, at Clock Corner, they started bringing in a towable axled trailer, and they could get it out of there immediately if they needed to. That's the best case for us and what our needs are.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, I, I think these are all great things. And I know that there's no perfect solution to what we're talking about. It just, you know, with, with premier parking so limited downtown already, you know, for us to lose one, two, or three spots for something like this, I'm glad that you did that on that, that particular day.
Yes.
Told them that you got today to get it out of here.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure they didn't love, but, I mean, it's...
Get your work done and get out of there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's necessary.
The biggest thing are the long-term projects because a downtown construction project is a difficult build. It's tight, you don't have a lot of room. You know, one of the other things, and you've seen them start popping up, are the pedestrian protection sections, you know, around the sidewalks. I mean, they get tight, but, you know, it is what it is. And if you're gonna choose the other thing, and I had mentioned it back when we had one in particular project that... back when we had one in particular project that was discussed, I, I laid it with the contractor that you may be required to work at night. We may not let you work in the middle of the day. Because if it is a huge section, if it's a bad intersection, heavily trafficked, both pedestrian and vehicular, they need to be doing it at night. Get your stuff and get out of there and, and not disrupt everything, or disrupt it as little as possible during the course of the day.
Council President, one, if I have.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, you may get to this or not, and I don't know if we've covered it or not, it's a big packet.
Yes, sir.
But, um, the drilling and the problems that we've had in this past year with the drilling and the coordination of the drilling with them hitting our water and sewer and, you know, things of that nature sometimes.
And the boring.
The boring in the drilling, yep, so, um, what's the deterrent on that, if I may? Because that seems to be quite frequent, and JT, do we have enough, are you enough to actually feasibly actually control that? Or do we need another JT?
There, there are no more JTs, but we would like to get in some help.
Real question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm spread pretty thin as it is.
Right.
I do subdivisions, and I do the permitting, and I do that, I do a lot of different things, I wear a lot of different hats. So, yes, somebody else would be beneficial to, to catch that.
For decisions.
Some of the damages that, that you see are, are, you know, they're just not preventable. And, and a lot of them, you'll see, they're, maybe a little more high-profile will be in kind of the older part of town. And in that part of town, you know, it, it's a little harder to find the infrastructure there, so locating some of that stuff, some of those sewer mains, and some of those water mains, when they're a hundred years old, it, it's really hard to find that stuff, so. So there are, sometimes, we, you know, they find things for us. It's the stuff that you don't see, though, that where they will pothole, and they'll find a lot of stuff and not hit it. And, and then they'll notify us, and we go out, look at it, say, okay, it's a two-inch water main on this side of the road that we, you know, that is feeding these X houses, you know, that's a hundred years old now. We know that's there, we know what it does, uh, and we can get that mapped, so that's, that's unfortunately, a lot of the stuff you're hearing about is the, the older part of town. The newer part of town, yes, if they're hitting something, and, you know, we have the S's and the B's and the the W's on the, the valley gutters, and we have that label, and they're hitting stuff, it's, it's negligence, and they should have to pay for it. So, that is absolutely, but, but the older part of town, it, it's tough, it's tough to locate that stuff.
So in the older part of town, not to stress on it, I know it's tough, but can we not demand higher technology? Instead of old-school way of doing things, where we're looking underground, in their technology to look underground? That would actually.
They'll do their own locating, so GGR, ground penetrating radar is, is utilized. But, that, that technology's great, but there's also a lot of huge trees in the, you know, the old part of town, and that'll pick up roots, and there's a lot of stuff in there that, that you just can't use that technology, so then, you, you can utilize other things, I think the water department has a new thing that will actually, it's a, it's a lateral launcher, it'll actually go into the main and it can, it can launch up some of these sewer laterals, and we can, we could utilize that, but, but we have clay mains, you know, sewer mains. And, uh, my fear is, is to have a contractor mess with some of that older stuff. I don't know if we'd be comfortable with that, cause they might do more damage.
Yeah, we don't want them messing, that's my whole point, I was trying to see what that balance looks.
So, so that would be part of, of a progression of maybe mapping this stuff. That's something that we may want to encourage or, or hire somebody to go in and find these laterals, get them mapped, then we know where they're at, then it's gonna be a better idea for us in the long run. We can, uh, you know, chase in our locator for sewer water. He, he can look on his map, he knows we could put a, you know, monument somewhere where those are at, like we got on some of the newer parts of the city.
Right.
There's a lot we can do.
Right. That's gonna, it might cost us to save money for as the future is going.
Precisely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention, and Jason.
Can you chime in and call me, Hunter, can too?
We are working with a team right now to map specifically water and sewer, then we'll move to the other utilities. But right now, water and sewer, so Vincent George, who works out of planning right now, he's got a team who is doing that, and they're utilizing a, a unit that Jason bought, a triple unit. And we're looking at possibly getting another one, so they can do that, exploit that, but yes, we're working on it now to map everything.
That's the GIS mapping.
It is, it is, yes.
I just want to let the topic, yeah, very good, thank you.
And Eric, I know you've still got some other kind of.
Real quick, yeah.
Important topics to address.
The biggest thing is, I just want to go over the stuff that I, you know, I think we reasonably think you'll probably get the most calls about. So, balcony, balconies and overhangs, which is the next section. This is something that, to be honest with you, has never really been regulated. We've never done it. And we've got a ton of balconies, we've got awnings, we've got all kinds of things all over the right of way. So, in talking about it, this is some language that, that we found in another city that has much the same type of downtown, and seeing how they handled these things. So, talking about the, the projections, and I'm just gonna go through, hit some of these bullet points. No projection shall exceed the distance determined by the clearance of the lowest point of the projection. So you're talking about how far out it is based on how, how tall it is. Okay? Clearance above grade, less than eight feet, there should be no projection permitted except for architectural details, as belt courses, sills, bases, and other details which may project up to six inches, and a lot of those things you're gonna see, and I probably won't use the correct term, but you've got the angled braces that come off or the decorative. You see those, those on some of our downtown. Sometimes they're structural, a lot of times they're just decorative. So, you know, allowing them to do that, but not come in that, something that's gonna obstruct the walkway. Uh, at the, at the discretion of the city, balconies and canopies that project in the right of way shall have a drainage system that prevents water directly onto the right of way, so that's gonna be a case-by-case basis, depending on their design. But same as we require homes that are under permit, and commercial buildings that are under permit, they need to account for any water or faster runoff that they're creating, if it's excessive. A lot of times it may not be, and a lot, some of them have actually incorporated that into their design. But we need to be able to have the ability to, to take a look at that if we need to. The things, the items that they have to comply with. No part of the balcony shall be allowed below a height of twelve feet above grade. Uh, nothing shall be placed on, over, or beyond the railing or wall of the balcony, so you can't have decorative items out there, you can't have plants and pots and things of that nature. Balconies may extend up to four feet into the right of way, provided they meet the conditions of the paragraphs listed above. And the distance between the back of the curb and the furthest, most projection of any balcony is not less than ten feet. The width of unobstructed paved walking surface beyond the furthest, most projection is not less than five feet. And balconies are not permitted to encroach in canopy zone of any planted or planned city street trees. So I'll let you kind of digest that, um, and we'll move on, talking about removal or repair of balconies. This pretty much puts the responsibility on the person that has it, they have to repair it. I know right after, well, it was actually a little while after the storm, we had someone on Fairhope Avenue that they had damage to their balcony, some of the fascia was coming off. Called them, told them, you need to get it taken care of, they did it within, I think, a couple of days, got it done. But this actually puts it in writing, that was just, you know, us calling them, telling them to get it taken care of. This gives us the ability to actually enforce that if we come up with somebody who's reluctant. Talks about, uh, removed upon, okay. Unlawful encroachments have to be removed within twenty-four hours of notice given. And if it's necessary to remove the encroachment, the owner is responsible for all the costs associated with it. Which actually, we have had comments before, it's your right of way, and we've got stuff, we tell them to remove stuff from the right of way. That has actually been said before. One thing, if you'll see that section on street furniture, that's a whole other topic that we didn't really come up with any. We didn't put anything together, because that's gonna require some additional discussion. But I know, uh, John has organized a team that's going around looking at all of our right of ways, and talking about ADA clearance and width of walking areas and things of that nature. And that's something they're trying to address. But that's, we got a lot of that downtown, if you walk around and actually take a look, we've got a lot of furniture and obstructions and things from these different shops that are out there. So, we're gonna hold off on adding any of that content until we get some guidance on how that, how it, you know, y'all would like for us.
Bless you.
Bless you. Talking about permitting, uh, we are using the CitizenServe online portal, and we're directing everybody on it. So, we've got everything electronically, and everybody can get ahold of all the paperwork for it. Plans and profile sheets, uh, required for gravity flow systems are required for projects submitted after future amendments to include the provisions for implementing GIS mapping. Okay, which is what you brought up earlier. One of the other things, and, uh, John and I talked about this one a lot, and, and he's looked at, you know, things he was used to where he came from. You know, depending on which contractor you're talking about, you can get a real basic sketch of what they want to do, and some others provide much more detailed engineering drawings, and we put in here that we want the detail, they need to make the time and effort and the expense to really investigate what they're doing, and not just give us a line diagram showing we're going from here to here, and not really showing us, well, what's under here to here. Uh, the rest of this is really permitting submittal information, what we're looking for as far as documents and information. Uh, the erosion control plan, or the erosion control ordinance is referenced in here, as is the tree ordinance. Talks about the city storm water management ordinance, the one that I believe you just recently approved, that we have to do with ADM every year. Safety plan, uh, talking about general protection for the public, including, uh, proposed use of barricade signs, lights, and fencing. One of the other things that happens all over town is a traffic control plan. And that's something that we need for a lot of the, they need to tell us what they're doing. And, you know, I got a call a couple months, oh, a couple of weeks ago, from a contractor, oh, we're getting ready to do work on one of your streets, we'll be blocking it today. No, you won't. So we had that discussion, and we got straight on that, but that, those kind of things happen. And the other thing is completed as built, uh, shall be submitted in hard copy, medium, and, and CAD files as well. Then we get into the definitions of small and large projects. Bonding requirements, which that's kind of. That was pretty much from the old ordinance, the bonding requirements were, did we have that in there?
It just goes into more definition of, for the major and the minor projects.
Okay.
And really, the, the minor and the major projects are, are guidance even for city projects. How to put it back, how you should, how you should, uh, install it and whatnot, so that's, that's where that adds some, some in there, but that's also for the contractors that are doing the city projects, so.
Yeah, it gives us also notification procedures, talking about line locates, and talking about notifying us before the commencing of any work. One of the other things, though, on large projects, we have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor before the permit's issued. Public works, utilities are there, planning's there, John's there, so we try to have a get-together and a pow-wow before they get started to try to get everybody on the same page, so that we've talked about how you're gonna proceed and how we're gonna do it.
And Eric, this happens also with the guys, um, AT&T, all of our franchises?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Yes, sir. Trenching and excavation requirements, talking about, uh, how trenching should be done. Talking about utility construction requirements in terms of depth of the material, or the depth of what they're putting in, inside and outside of the roadway limits.
That's what you were asking about a second ago, I think.
Uh, give some information on backfill material, what they have to use for these, so that they can get these areas backfilled and get back in, get them paved, and they're gonna hold up. Steel plates may be required in congested or heavily traveled, traveled areas for, to cover open trenches, cause a lot of times they can't get it done in the day. So they're gonna have to leave it open, we have the ability to really make them take some provisions to address that. And right-of-way restorations. And I'm gonna scroll through this, if any, you have any questions on what I'm doing, please stop me and, and we'll continue on. Once again, definition and, and specifications for minor projects. Restoration outside paved areas. Talking about sidewalks, concrete sidewalks affected by the construction shall be replaced to the nearest control joint in the affected area. And giving some guidance on boring and drilling, how that is to be, how that is to be done. Uh, items to be performed following the construction, including two-year maintenance period for the permitee will not begin until all corrective actions have been completed and approved. Talking about irrigation in the right of way, and we do have some instances where that does come up, we've had it in, uh, landscape islands and subdivisions, we've had it in, you know, different places. So we wanted to address that, make sure we have some guidelines for that. Micro trenching, talking about guidelines for micro trenching, and this is based on some research on the, the method, it's not something that we see a lot of, so I think it took a little homework to kind of figure out how they're doing it. The tree protection ordinance is referenced, which is something that, that is looked at as they're, you know, investigating the route they're gonna go, talking about root, tree roots and things that they may impact. Now, these sections that you're seeing here, just so you know, we took some of these, uh, this is actually referenced in our city building code supplement. When we adopted the codes in twenty eighteen, we put some frequently asked questions or some high points that the home builders and some of the other contractors needed to know, and this is the language that was in that ordinance. But that's also where we discuss parking pads, being no larger than ten by twenty of impervious material. We talk about, uh, shell gravel and, and limestone within two feet of a road or sidewalk, cause that gets washed into the road, it migrates into the road, and causes all kinds of things. Uh, talks about our street cutting requirements, cause we do have, um, a fee schedule, and the street cuts are based on the size of the cut and the age of the asphalt. It, the, the factor increases if they're trying to cut newer sidewalk, or newer asphalt. And then there's reservation in the backside for code interpretations and construction details. If we have stuff that comes up, or a question that isn't necessarily addressed in here. One of the things we do in the building department, if we have something that comes up that's not clear, we will do a memo, we will publish that memo, and then we attach it to our code supplement so that it's memorialized for folks that are coming, that are coming after. And if we have new construction details that we need to add, we can attach them to, to one of the appendix. Guidelines on micro trenching, guidelines on special provisions for irrigation. And that is a detail for, uh, brick pavers with edge concrete, to kind of give a detail as these contractors are doing work, and they're replacing pavers, it gives them some construction standards by which to work.
Thank you for y'all's work on this. I know, I know JT and Eric have spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
Council members, do you have any additional questions for Eric right now? Any of those covered? You got it all digested?
I think so. If you have anything that comes up, please reach out to us, we're happy to talk about it, you know, we're.
What's your timeframe that you're trying to move forward with this on the next?
Oh, no, I, I need you to walk it on. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, my attention.
That answers your question.
You know, we're gonna look at it, and, you know, we're kind of thinking, I'm assuming, like, maybe we should have everything together by maybe first meeting in June, you think, or where are we? Another work session?
I guess y'all had questions or comments, and also getting up to incorporate, you have not incorporated all of Greg's.
No, that is, yeah, everything, everything, and, and just. Yes, ma'am. And everything, on the summary I gave you, I also provided you a copy of Greg's email.
The summary was ten pages.
Yeah, well, yeah. It was, it was four. But yes, so that you can see what Greg's comments were, and I, I was really appreciative of what he did, going through and looking at it, because he's really sharp, and he knows, and he's looking out for our interests. So. So, you know, he took the time and gave us the comments and we did incorporate his comments into this.
And it might, and just, just for clarification too, um, this, this seems like a lot of content.
Seems.
Obviously, I could see you shaking your head. But, but in, in, in true reality, this, this has already existed. You know, the first 19 pages of this document, uh, in, in, in overall, content existed before. It was just, this is the edited version, we updated it from 2005. So, so yes, it's a lot, but we've technically added 11 pages, I think, total of necessary stuff, uh, in here. So, so just, so you're not adding that much more stuff to this.
No, I, I think it's great, JT, because it's, it's great because we're seeing that we have to evolve or change or grow as we continue to grow with the different changes, so I think it's great.
I also wanted to mention too that, um, John Thomas and them have been great about, we've been walking around downtown and just looking at the right-of-way areas, the sidewalks. I walked with them one, one day and kind of tasked them with looking at our green boxes and our trashcans where we can maybe reclaim some sidewalk or, you know, on Bancroft where there's an, there's a strip where the walking school bus uses it. You can't grow any grass, so can we expand the sidewalk there so you have more room? We're looking at some things like that because if we're going to ask other people to do things like with street furniture, we want to make sure we're abiding by the rules too. So again, being able to move some of those trashcans and green boxes to reclaim some space will be helpful as well.
And I think to add to that merit, um, PNB are on top of it, Mr. Grover and the pedestrians and bicycles. There, we have a crew that are actually out, citizen-wise, experienced guys that are helping us as well, so that's a great deal. Um, so, yeah, very good.
Yeah, anytime you guys want to go for a walk Tuesday morning.
Yeah, that's my second invite.
Join us for our walk, you can look at some of the balconies, maybe you give us a little help on that stuff. I know Mayor-
I would like to do it, JT.
So.
So I'll get with you. Yeah, it'll be my exercise day.
Come on out, it, it, you know, it might, it start getting hot, so now might be a good time to go before it's too hot.
Was there anything y'all need from us other than just comments before we bring it back for another work session in the future?
Yes, sir, if y'all can look at it and kind of give us your comments, give us your thoughts. Uh, the other thing that really, like I said, we kind of didn't put anything in there about the street furniture and the obstructions actually on the sidewalks, that's, we need some guidance on that. Because I, I mean, if you want us to write it, we, we can write it. Depends on-
Has there been any input from any of the-
The ladies.
That's not what I was going to say. Uh, architects, engineers, downtown merchants, are we waiting until the public comment section?
Uh, well, I, I, to be hon- Um, I hadn't really sent it to any of them because I can already tell you before we send it to them what some of the comments are going to be and I, you know, my, our position is, I think we need to do what's in the best interest of the city.
Right.
Um, and, you know, be accommodating as we can to our citizens and our business owners. But, you know, we've got, you know, we've got concerns, we have things that are happening right now and we've got four utility contractors and another one coming and they are blowing and going and everywhere. So, you know, I think we need to take the steps that we feel are necessary to protect our infrastructure and, and handle these things. I will let y'all, but that's a decision for you.
That, that is, that does bring up, I did have a question. What about those, uh, contractors that are in, that are laying fiber now or, and we adopt that? I mean, is it, do, do those rules take effect as soon as they're adopted?
The rules, and we're going to treat it the same way we do a building code adoption. If your permit was issued, you will be held to the standard of the rules that were in place at the time the permit was issued. When they come back for another permit, if we've issued, if we've adopted this, they will be held to the standards of the rules that are in place.
So like AT&T, they're doing this under multiple permitting, right? I mean, it's not one for the whole city.
No, 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 it's-
So 2,500 linear feet or, you know, 2,000 feet or something and then they come back and get another.
Councilman, so the, the 115211, uh, through the planning commission, so a lot of these comments that you mentioned, they come up in that with Hunter and his team, and we, we get together and we figure out what might be necessary for these longer ones. And we do have a limitation, uh, anything over 600 feet gets a, gets a review. We look at it, what is it, is there repairs? Sometimes repairs, you know, if there's already an existing line there, well then, then we, we know they can accommodate that line. But anything over that, it's looked at in 115211 review. And a lot of these comments that we have living in here actually are, uh, living in there too. So that, so those staff comments go in there and I can have them give us the, uh, the GIS coordinates of their lines and the as-built and everything else too, so. But it is multiple permits.
Most of those permits are already have a lot of this, uh, as conditions of their program.
So this, this kind of falls back on it.
But one of the things I will tell you those contractors are going to have comments about is they have obtained some permits under the previous fee schedule. When this is adopted, when they come for additional permits, they will be subject to the new fees that are in and there's going to be probably a little sticker shock with some of them. Uh, but, you know, our fees before were significantly lower than anywhere. Yeah, so that's going to be a comment that you will probably get. But it, it's, it is what it is.
Thank y'all again for working on this and we will see it again.
You will see it again. And, and please send us your comments, let us know what you're thinking and things you might want to see.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, um, kind of running a little tight on time, committee updates, can y'all hold those over till the council meeting?
I don't have any, anyway, all my committee meetings start tomorrow, so.
Okay, well, we'll hold those over till the council meeting, we'll try to get the agenda covered real quick before we take a break. And then department heads, if you've got anything really pertinent, uh, please bring it forward. But first, let's run through this agenda. Do have a couple of items to be looking to walk on, but the first item is, uh, purchase lighting equipment for the Ford F-350 for the fire department. So chief, yeah, see chief, okay. Next is, uh, City Fairhope approves the procurement and installation of the south fence and gate of the Beacon Building for the wastewater department. So I guess that'll be Jason, let's see here, oh, there he is. I always have a hard time finding you out there, kind of trying to hide behind somebody.
Oh, say it, Excel.
Next item is, uh, procurement of commercial glass replacement in the Nick Center. And who would be handling that with, would that be Paige or Richard? And did we reject this earlier and then bring it back forward for another bid, is that?
We didn't get a bid.
Okay, we got no bid.
To go and negotiate with three of the bidders and we, and we got you three prices, so we make the recommendation. Insurance is in play here, big.
Gotcha. All right, um, item number eight is, uh, water main replacement at 181 and this is to reject the bids, uh, for being over budget and rebid the project. So Jason, that's your recommendation. Next item, number nine, uh, surplus items, the mayor and treasurer want to put on, uh, gov. So mayor, I guess you'll be handling that if Kim is out. Item number 10 is that, uh, mayors authorize a sign agreement between Fairhope Single Tax and the City of Fairhope. And this is for the art, uh, arts alley sculptures. And we heard about that last, uh, meeting during the, uh, work session. Item number 11, and this is, uh, proposed, uh, purchasing policy guidelines amendment. So that can also be the mayor to cover any details of that and she's got a budget calendar that was put in everyone's box last week and that kind of goes in conjunction with those changes. Item number 12 is, uh, baykeeper to block the streets for the Grand Man Triathlon. And then we've got a beer and wine permit for public, so I'm assuming that, okay, that's for state highway 104. Liquor license for Ferris by the, am I saying that correctly, chief? Ferris by the bay, um, and that's the Old Church Street Inn. And public participation in executive session, and then we've got- Two items to walk on. And one is, uh, resolution, Councilman Burrell, related to the, um, MPO and the bridge. So we'll have you cover that item for us when the time comes. And then the other item, council members, that we're going to look to walk on is a, um, a build out of, uh, the phase two of the west wing of, of the Beacon Building. And Richard had brought that forward to me and, and, um, basically, we've got a contractor is ready to roll. Basically, on the timing, this would normally wait two weeks, but since he's ready to go and, uh, the bid was not too bad. It looks like it's about $2,000 over budget total, or is that just 2,000? Wanted to try to move forward with the, with the low bidder. We did have five bids on that, so we had a decent number to look at, so. That pretty much covers it, we got about, time for about a seven-minute break. Is there anyone that needs to address the council? Jeff, yeah, from the directors, before we take a break.
I'll be real quick.
Yes, sir.
IT Department, we have four employees. Um, unfortunately, today is Joe's last meeting that he will be recording, his last week is this week.
Oh, no, Joe.
I just wanted to publicly thank Joe for all of his hard work and, uh, he'll be, he'll be missed.
Absolutely, well, good luck, Joe, and we will definitely miss you, sir. Anyone else, uh, from a director that needs to address, yes, sir, come on.
We yell it from here.
That's all right.
Site plan on 181 Polo Crossing. We approved, put some conditions and working through, uh, just a quick update, we got word today. They've actually removed one of their two drop trees. So assuming everything else stays the same, all trees are saved, all the buildings stay the same.
Now Polo Crossing's on 98 though, right?
Green road. 98, yes.
Okay.
Right, right. 98 down by Old Bayview.
Okay, yeah.
Everything okay there?
All right, good deal. Anyone else?
I got a P.
Directors? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, we'll be back to start the council meeting at 6 o'clock.